13 to 2022, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, I have a little tickle in my throat. I was sick a few weeks ago, still getting over the cough, so I am wearing a mask just because I'm coughing and to make folks that are in the room comfortable. So the first item on the agenda is public comment, and we do not have anybody signed up for public comment, so we'll move on from that item. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent update. Dr. Rab, if you could take that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Gropey, members of the committee. The first thing I wanted to mention is that we had a wonderful back-to-school. We had the teachers back together on September 1st for a convocation, the first one we've had since 2019. Due to COVID, we were able to get together, have a little breakfast. We recognized teachers entering their fourth year, getting professional teacher status, and we also recognized teachers in their 10th, 20th, and 30 years, and we gave them little pins of recognition for that. And I think everybody came out of that meeting really fired up and ready to go for the new school year. September 2nd, we had a great first day of school. It felt very, very normal. It felt very stable, what we used to do back in 2019. The students were back. Mr. Ford and I went around to all the schools. We visited the students. We got to see their bright smiles and see them ready to go for the new school year. So it was exciting. Our 13 buses were immediately in play, and we eliminated the double runs at the middle school. And I'd like to thank the committee for their support on those additional buses, because it has immediately had an effect this year on our students, and we don't have any double runs. We continue to work on transportation requests. We've had many of them come in even after the first day of school, and we continue to work on those. Overall, district-wide, we're up 74 students from last year, mostly at the high school, about 30 more students at the high school than we had last year, and then the rest of them kind of smattered around the other grade levels. And our EL population is still growing. We left last year with 409 ELs, and as of today, we have 463, and we're still doing those evaluations. So those are the big changes that we've seen in terms of enrollment. Friday night, we had our first football game against Norwood High School, and one of the things I recognized is we were thrilled to see so many people show up. We had so many students, so many parents, and so many people show up. But we do have a little work to do on some new signage and also just crowd control. And so we're working on that for the next game, so that everybody understands when we get crowds that size, now that we're back to normal, we need to manage those crowds. And I recognize the long ticket lines, too, and we're working on making sure that that doesn't happen again. So I just wanted to reassure people that we saw those issues and we're working on them for the next game and the games moving forward. We were excited to see the school spirit. We were excited to see the pride. We did have a very, very moving tribute before the game to recently deceased Mr. Paul Monte, recently deceased teacher who retired back in 2005, and recently deceased Alan Bontier, who was assistant principal at Stoughton High School, who died very, very suddenly over the summertime. And we had a very moving tribute for them. We had the Stoughton Police Department do a color guard, and it was a fantastic opportunity right before the game. The last thing I did want to mention as part of my update is our central registration office is up and running. So right next to this office, we have our central registration office here, and I'd like to thank the committee again for their support. It has been fantastic over the summer. All families pre-K-12 are coming here to register. It's provided efficient and consistent registration and residency checks. And soon, at the end of September, just like we did last year, we'll start our residency audits, and we randomly select families for residency audits, and we'll be doing those as well. And it's been great having that centralized here in the office, and it's been an opportunity for efficiency and consistency. So it's working very, very well. So those are the three things that I wanted to mention.
Thank you very much for the update. Does anybody have any? Thank you very much for the update. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Rab. Moving on to new business, I'd like to ask Mr. George Delensky to come to the table, Dr. Stable. Welcome, George. Nice to see you. We have the Stoyak user facilities fee waiver request that George provided us a correspondence, a letter requesting a waiver to rental, of the rental fee for Stoyak for the 2022-23 season. I'll hand it to you, George.
Very simple. We're looking for the traditional waiver of the user fee. Unfortunately, I cannot ask for the waiver of the custodial fee, but we'll go, we'll start with the user fee. If we can get that waived, that'll make life a lot easier for us. We're in the process right now, as you know, doing registrations. We've had, last count, what I've heard, is about a couple hundred kids just signed up in the first couple of weeks, and we started that just right after school started. So we're looking for a lot more. We have travel tryouts coming up, rec tryouts are coming up, registrations are open, and we're expecting a decent turnout.
So this is for the waiver for basketball and cheerleading programs along with the softball clinics in the spring?
Yeah. If we can waive the fees, that makes it easier for us and less expensive, too.
Okay. And you've already submitted the deeds?
Everything's been submitted, permits, applications, dates, times. I had to sit there and write every single day. New procedure, no blanket. Requests can be put, had to be every single day, had to be listed. So I had to sit there and write every single day that we want to use the facilities, Saturdays, Sundays, Monday through Friday, and all had to be listed by day and time. A little work, but I'm getting used to it.
Well, yeah, and we have an automated version online now, so hopefully you don't have to write it out next year.
You're talking about somebody who's still using a flip phone and using a calculator.
Funny. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the wave, to waive the fees for Stoyak as requested on, going to give like all of the dates, the 2022-2023 season. Oh, for basketball and softball and cheerleading.
Okay. Yes, I have a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Hope you feel better.
Thank you. Have a great night, and thank you for coming in person. It was nice to see you.
It was nice to be seen. Be still, Charlie.
The next item on the agenda is the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program. We have a letter here. Dr. Rab, would you like to take that?
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. Mrs. Miller, administrative principal at the high school, wrote us a memo. "The ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Math and Science School Grant Program. Care of the Stoughton Mobile right here in town would like to present Stoughton High School with a $500 donation to be spent towards student programs and our educational supplies that focus on improvements in math and science." And Mrs. Miller attached some detailed support and is asking for approval this evening to accept that $500 donation for those purposes.
Thank you, Dr. Rab. That's a standard item that we generally have gotten, and it's very gracious of them every year, and we're very appreciative that they do this program for the schools. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
No, I'm just, I'd like to make a motion to accept the generous donation from ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program.
Okay.
I have a second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Apologize for all the coughing. The next item on the agenda is policy JICFB. It's the Biannual Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Excuse me. I want to be clear. The name of the policy is JICFB, Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, not Biannual. So I'll give it to you, Dr. Rab.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. The Massachusetts general law requires school committees to review their bullying plan every two years, and this is the year that we need to do that. The only change, we read through it, Mr. Ford read through it, and the only changes that we're recommending are on the last page, and they're in red. And there was recent legislation that allows students to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protective hairstyles, that we do not discriminate against students for their hairstyles. And we also cannot discriminate for pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. And so for those two, we just wanted to update the policy.
Mr. Ford, would you like to add anything to that?
This was just a component that came out of the Acts of 2022, so it's an annual update that we get from MASC, actually, that specifies potential areas of intersection between current legislation and our existing policies. I mean, they're very helpful, and you guys get the update. So, yeah, this is just an intersection with this last year's legislation, how it impacts on our policies. We'll have to eventually actually come back through and look at some of our existing policies to include this particular piece, but we can do that through the Policy Working Group.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Dr. Rab. So this is a biannual, just, it's a biannual review and approval. The language in here, again, as Mr. Ford stated, comes from the MASC, where they kind of comb through law, and they provide with the guidance on the wording changes for the policies. And this is something with the school year starting that we need to have enacted and in place and improve. So I'll start down this end. Do you have any questions?
Nope. No questions.
Neither do I.
So I can make a motion to accept the changes of JICFB, Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Second.
Oop, she got one. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will ask Christine Sakawa to come up. Hello, welcome, our business manager. Nice to see you. The next item is the Student Activity Accounts Reauthorization, which is a standard we have to do annually as well. I'll hand it to you.
Yep. Every year, we vote the actual, you got a listing of all of the activities at the high school and at the middle school, and annually we are to vote these in case something's deleted or added. So annually, I'll be bringing this to you in September. And the other thing that policy says is that we need to vote, set maximum balances for each of the checking accounts, because they have separate checking accounts, the high school and the middle school. My recommendation would be $25,000 for the high school and $5,000 for the middle school.
I'm just going to hold for questions with anybody. If anybody have any questions, I'll start down with Lindsay.
Is that per account or is it total?
That's, high school is $25,000 in the checking account, and middle school is $5,000 in the checking account. And then you're talking about the total amount of money?
Yeah, I'm looking at the second here.
Yep. So how it works is there's what we call a savings account, and that funds the two checking accounts. What we, the maximum we can have in each checking account at one time is $25,000 for the high school and $5,000 for the middle school. That's why it's so much.
Yeah, I think for clarifications.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, Katie?
I don't, but I can make a motion.
I don't have any, so feel free.
All right. I'll make a motion to vote to set the maximum balance for student activity checking accounts. High school, $25,000, and the middle school, $5,000.
Nice.
Is that right?
Correct.
And Lindsay seconded that. She's getting quicker than you now, Catherine. I see what's going on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There's a second component to that.
To make a motion to vote to approve existing student activity accounts. Do I have to do like the 62?
Do you want to just fill us in, and so the public can understand a little bit on that second bullet, and then we can do the motion?
Sure. Do you want me to, you want me to?
Just underneath where it states there's 62 clubs and?
Oh, okay. So at the high school, there's 62 different clubs. Athletics is several of them. The classes of, each class has their own. Destination Imagination, DECA, Drama, Emotional Support, Fine Arts. There's a lot of them. Life Skills, Math Department, Math Team, National Honor Society.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's 62 clubs there at the high school, and there is five at the middle school.
There's only five clubs at the middle school?
Yes.
That keep money.
That keep money.
Oh, okay. I was like.
Oh, no, no, the keep money, sorry. That's different.
Yeah, I think that's why we want to talk about it a little, yeah.
So a separate ledger is kept for each of the schools, whether it's the high school or the middle school.
Okay.
Okay. So that, this is just for student activities, which is, the students are paying for these activities. That's what this, that's what this is.
Okay.
So to distinguish as a student activity is if you're, if a student pays $10 for X, that $10 pays for X.
Okay. I get it.
We just run the money through the school, through these accounts.
Okay.
But so there, there could be other clubs and stuff going on.
Right. There could be other clubs that we don't take care, money in for, and that we don't like.
Because I'm like, I'm sure there is.
Yeah, there is, probably is, right. So it's just every year we have you vote these, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion would be to approve the existing student activity accounts.
Yep. I made motion to vote to approve the existing student activity accounts.
And that, that motion is on the table for a second?
Second.
Wow. Lindsay, see what's going on down here? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Thank you very much for presenting that information. Appreciate it. The next item is the ratification of the Administrative Assistance Association.
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. I just want to thank Mrs. Francois Morissette for working on the administrative team, and with Christine, working on the administrative team to put this together, as well as Mrs. Mary Beth Cancellery and her team on the secretary's now administrative assistant side. So just a couple of highlights of the changes. We are making, changed the name. So instead of calling it Secretaries Association, we're going to call them Administrative Assistance Association. I think it's a more current 21st century name, and really speaks to what they're doing. In terms of the salary grid there, staying on their salary grid for this year, but next year and for the next two years of the contract in '24, '25, we've agreed on a compressed grid with only 1.5% between steps, and that's in line with some of the other things that we've been doing with some other contracts as well. We have agreed that if one of them wants to take advantage of the sick leave IPAC provision, they just need to let us know by November 1st, and then we can, you know, do it for the end of the year. We added Juneteenth as a, as a holiday. And then the other thing that we did is just in terms of early retirement incentive, we just agreed to the first step on the old grid as a comparison point that we need to do that. So a couple of very small changes, we've been able to get them done, and I'm very excited to present the Administrative Assistance Association contract via approval.
You were able to also work on the next three years for the contract, the percentage points for, what is it? What are they?
In years two and three, it's a 1.5% compression between, between the steps.
Great. That's great to hear. Great job. I know Fabian couldn't be here due to work, but we'd like to thank her for her time in those, and for you as well, Dr. Rab. I'd like to thank the full negotiating committee for the Administrative Assistance Association as well for their time in doing this. And Christina Sakawa, I believe, were you in those?
Yes, I was.
I'd like to thank you, too. How about that? But thank you, everyone. So with that, does anyone have any questions or?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the school committee, Town of Stoughton, Stoughton Schools Administrative Assistant Association for the July 1st, 2022 to July 30th, June, I mean, June, sorry, June 30th, 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a special town meeting, articles discussion. Dr. Rab, I'll hand that to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey, members of the committee. Throughout the spring, we've been watching the state budget, and we were watching our Chapter 78. Every year, Stoughton gets an amount of Chapter 78. And this year, because of our increase in low-income students, special education, and English language learners, Stoughton received an additional $4 million in Chapter 78, and that's above and beyond what we budgeted for. So this is an opportunity for us to really work with our low-income students, our EL population, our special education population, and really bring up to speed what we need to do for those students. There are increasing demands for all of those students as a result of the increased numbers. And so we're laying out a plan in FY '23 right now, because the town is receiving those revenue right now in special town meeting, and then a plan for next year as well. So to break it down into three broad categories or three articles, to take the $4 million, we want to break it into three articles for FY '23. The first is for $2.9 million for additional programs and services. And I won't read every single bullet, but just a couple of the bullets for the additional program and services. We want to eliminate transportation fees and user fees for all families, and that will certainly help the families with low income. And I want to thank the committee for their suggestion on that. I know that they've been working hard with us to really take care of low-income families. We want to expand our extended school day programs at the middle school for students and provide additional special education staff, particularly around social, emotional learning, additional BCBA's and additional RBT's to help those students out. We want to expand literacy and math specialists, increase our number of ESL teachers and paraprofessionals. You'll see, earlier I talked about our increasing numbers of students, and so we've incorporated that enrollment component into this. We also want to continue to provide robust acceleration academies during the summer. We've been able to do that with ESER funding, and now we would switch that to this funding and be able to embed it into our budget moving forward. So that's in a summary of what we want to do with $2.9 million, which is a wonderful opportunity for us.
Can we pause on that?
Sure.
Slow down, maybe?
Absolutely. I'm very excited, sorry.
So I just, to pause on that, what happened was when the governor did the correction to the calculation, when he corrected it, found that our low-income level of students that are enrolled in our schools, that percentage has increased significantly, and that meant that we were entitled to $4 million more of that Chapter 70 funding from the town, from the state. And that came in, this happens every year. When this did come up back in February, you had spoken to the previous town manager just to, you know, it was shocking to everyone, because we thought it would maybe just be like 500, that, we really didn't know. But when that happened, it opened everybody's eyes, including the school committees, to, and it gave us a moment to have to step back and say, hold on, we really need to look at our populations and what's going on and what we're providing with the learning loss from COVID, social, emotional needs and all of that. And the fact that we were receiving COVID relief money during the pandemic, and that's gone, and ESER funding came in to kind of replace that, but that will be gone. So everything that we've put in place due to COVID and the learning loss and all of those things that we know were not only needed for the past school year, but this year and going forward, this Chapter 70 funding is what's really coming in to assist with that, because the ESER money that they gave us will be gone. One thing just to note is with the user fees for music and sports, that's a big one as well, because this ensures that all students can participate regardless of income level. And right now, that brings, that will bring equity amongst all students, where many families cannot afford for their students to be able to do that. And that's extremely important that we're able to provide that, and that we're going forward with this article to give students and families the opportunities to do things that other students can based on income. And this will do away with that. I don't know if anybody has anything in relation to that first article they wanted to talk about or ask. Mr. Ford, do you want to add anything? I know you worked on this as well.
No, I just think the timing of this is remarkable. I know we've been talking for a number of years, and we have been seeing the poverty rate in the, in the town go up every year, as well as, you know, we've been seeing this linear increase in the number of kids that, that need service in terms of English language education. And, you know, that combined with like the learning loss and some of the social, emotional issues we've seen in kids based on their experience during the pandemic. I mean, this really gives us an opportunity not just to put the programs in place for the short term to remediate the, the immediate effect of the pandemic, but actually to sustain all those programs. Because we've, I mean, we've learned a lot, having put in, I can't explain the number of different programs, and now the data is coming out, you know, what really works. And, you know, we'll actually have the capacity to keep all these programs in place for the long term. Because, you know, although you identified a lot of need after the pandemic, those needs have always existed, and we've never quite had the capacity to put something in place where everybody can get what they need to be successful, be it related academics or the social, emotional health. And this just really rounds out the school district, and it really ensures the fact over the long term, you know, kids are going to get what they need to be successful, everybody's going to have access to incredibly high-quality education, and we can sustain what we're doing basically indefinitely. So this is just simply remarkable.
Sorry, Dr. Rab, I just wanted to highlight, and Dr. Ford, I mean, Dr. Ford, did you get your doctor? Mr. Ford?
No, I haven't.
Okay. There you go. Article two.
Sure. Article two, so we were really brainstorming about ways to use the remaining $1.1 million. And we came up with, with two articles that we think really speak to safety and security, particularly in the wake of Ivaldi. The Daw School and the Given School right now have single entry points, and you may not have noticed, but when you go into those schools, you buzz in and you're right in the lobby. And so the other schools all have two entry points. If you remember, at the high school or the middle school, you buzz into one door, and then you have to speak to somebody, and then you buzz into the second door. And so it's the current standard to have a dual-entry building. And this will allow us to create a second entrance inside the lobby. So we wouldn't be constructing outside the building. We'd be constructing those, both of those buildings have pretty large lobbies. And I spoke to Mrs. Husany, our Director of Maintenance and Operation, and she did some preliminary pricing, would be about $300,000 each, to create that second security entrance and make sure that those two buildings can maintain the same security that we have in the other buildings as well. And so that would be an opportunity to use these funds for that purpose and really increase security for all of our students at those two buildings. So that's, that's the gist of Article two. Article three, we're really doing a lot of work this year, looking at all of our safety and security, even before Ivaldi, and we were looking at the elementary camera systems. The middle school and the high school have very robust camera systems. The high school's brand new. It has a great camera system. The elementaries have some good cameras. There are camera surveillance inside and outside, but it's not comprehensive everywhere. So we had a company come in and take a look at our elementary schools and do a bit of evaluation for us, and, you know, with, with the hope that down the road, there might be funding available, and we could, we could do something. And our current building setups have minimal coverage in common areas, but it's not the full coverage. And so we put together this article for $452,409 in order to provide those upgrades to the elementary schools. And it would really allow us to bring the elementary schools to the same security level as the high school and the middle school, which is exciting for us. And that would, that would completely use the $4 million that we're getting in the additional Chapter 70, additional Chapter 70 funding.
Well, we had a previous meeting, I think it was in June, we talked about the money was coming in. So we've been talking about this publicly, so we knew. And we knew that previous time, we know that there's always a special town meeting every year, and that that was already preempted. We knew back in the spring that that would be coming, the select board would choose a date, and we would be putting together articles, because we were told we needed to bring it forward for this town meeting. Just to break it out and to be clear, the $4 million, it's $4.2 million, and we are looking at the four, because the $200,000 was what we overestimated, because there's an estimate we do with the budget every year, Christine knows, and we actually buffered that in, thinking that's where it was going to come, not knowing that they were going to change the low-income calculations. And the, the way that we're trying to break this out, and the reason we're doing these articles, is the 2.9 is to put that money in the budget this year. Students that, people that have paid for busing would get reimbursed, students that have paid for athletic things of that, anything prepaid, would be reimbursed to families, and this would go into this year's budget. So that's how that would get offset. The other two articles, which is, I believe, 1.1 mil?
Yes, about just about.
$1.1 million. The reason we're doing two articles and not rolling it into the budget is we recognize[1734.75] The reason we're doing two articles and not rolling it into the budget is we recognize and want to be fiscally responsible. So these two articles would be brought forward to utilize those funds that came forward in, at the end of June?
Yes.
At the end of June. And then for next school year, when we bring our budget forward, the slight increase would be the contractual obligations that we have, which would be that 1.1 that we're trying to be, again, fiscally responsible. So essentially, we wouldn't be asking for an increase in the budget next year, which is unheard of.
Exactly.
But knowing that we have the 4 million that the state has given us, we're trying to utilize it in the right ways. So essentially, this isn't, we're going to take this increase and then come back with a budget and ask for 2.5% or 3% next year. That's not what we're going to do. We want to be respectful, and we also understand that that's not what the taxpayers are looking for the school committee to do. We're just going to spend the money that the state has given us additional, in good faith.
Thanks.
Okay, so do you have drafted articles?
I do. On the third page of the memo, there are three articles drafted. One is, the first one is the supplemental school budget, because the 2.9, it's $2,948,500, would be added to our FY '23 budget. So we would be adding that to the budget immediately at special town meeting approval. And then the other two articles are capital articles, one for $600,000 for school safety and security, dual-entry improvements at the Daw and the Gibbons, and the other one for $452,409 for school safety and security, video camera improvements at the elementary schools.
And that is extremely important and key as we continue to work through. I know there were drills last year, the end of the school year, there's drills that we have, and we always look to see where there's security issues, concerns, parents reach out and try to make sure that procedures are in place for that not to happen again. These are not nice-to-haves. These are needs and musts, especially after what happened last year. So I give kudos to your team who put these together and prioritized them for that money. I don't know who was part of that.
Mr. McGee, Director of Technology, Mrs. Sukho, Business Manager, and Mr. Ford were very instrumental in putting this together with me.
Great. And thank you to the school committee members that made the priorities on the first article, which we prioritized, the special education, the busing fees, the sports fees, the extended programs for special education and all of that. I want to thank all you guys for your input in prioritizing those. So I guess at the next meeting, we can look at them and approve. Okay. Is that okay, guys? Thank you, Dr. Rob, again, and everyone. The next item on the agenda is the Stoughton Public Schools Triennial District Plan. Do it again.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Groppi, members of the committee. This is an extraordinarily comprehensive plan that really jumps off the prior three-year plan, and I wanted to take a moment and thank the committee for giving us our three goals. We talked back in February and March about the goals of social-emotional learning, special education, NEls, and those goals, at the same time, were rolling into what we just talked about with this additional state funding with Chapter 70, and they're absolutely the goals that we need to focus on for the next three years. So during the course of the spring, as we were putting together the triennial plan, it really began to coalesce into the absolute needs of the district right now. So beginning with social-emotional, if you take a look at the first, at the first goal or the first element, it's social-emotional learning, pre-K to 12 program development. And I won't read the entire background, the goal provides a background into how we got here, but in short terms, we started the work actually this year. So we were able to use ESER funding approved, and we were able to start with what's called MTSS academies, that's the Massachusetts tiered support system. And we had nine teams this year, one from each school and a district-wide academy that started this SEL work. And the PBIS program, we started at the high school, the middle school, and the preschool, and SEL mental health academy at the elementary schools. That pre-work that they did this year has laid the ground for this SEL work that we're going to be doing, and we're hoping to do this year. And so over the three years, we're hoping to evaluate different SEL programs this year, form an SEL committee comprised of a wide variety of constituents, and really put down a curriculum for SEL for our students. This year, many of the schools tried different things. They tried what's called responsive classroom, where students do different social-emotional things in the classroom. They've tried zones of regulation, where students identify their feelings as red, yellow, or green. Now's the time to coalesce all of those things into one pre-K to 12 curriculum. And so we'll be spending the first year putting that curriculum together, and that curriculum is really going to revolve around five areas, and self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, all under the umbrella of social-emotional learning. In the second year, we start the professional development and train the entire staff on this new curriculum, and in the third year, we implement it. In the second year, what's kind of neat about it is there's an intersection with special education. And so social-emotional learning and special education come together in the second year. And as we work, and in a moment when I explain the special education goal, you'll see in that second year, we start to work together with special ed and SEL and make sure that those two are working together and the curriculum is working together to meet those needs. So very high-level discussion, but we're real excited to continue this work. I won't even say begin this work, because we've already started working with SEL, but we really want to work on a pre-K to five, pre-K to 12 curriculum for social-emotional learning. And there's lots of things out there that we can look at. The Department of Education has different things out there we can look at, and we want to put all of that together and develop a program on all three tiers. There's tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one is the top, you know, 85% of our students, tier two, students who need more intensive work, and then tier three for most intensive work. So we're excited to begin that goal. I'm happy to answer any questions about the social-emotional learning goal, but I'm thrilled with the work the group has done this year because it'll be that much stronger in '23 and be, as a result of the work that they did this year. So that's kind of a summary of what we're planning to do. I'm happy to answer any questions or...
No questions. Do you?
So, can you just high-level, what are the three goals?
Sure. So three goals, the first one is social-emotional learning, second one is special education, and the third one is around English-language learners. I started with the social-emotional learning goal first.
Well, we appreciate that you guys took the time to do this and aligned to what the school committee's goals for the district were, because these align to what the goals are for the overall district and what we prioritized. So thank you. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Ford? I know you're part of it.
So I just think it's important to point out the fact that we actually started preparing for the SEL goal last year. And the reason why, well, there's a number of reasons why we selected the MTSS academies, both the PBIS and the SEL. But one of the pieces with it is as you finish your first year, we actually generated nine plans. And what those nine plans then allowed us to do is compile all the information that was part of them for specific schools in a district as a whole, and then aggregate it as a district plan. So we weren't just coming in and developing a plan, what we thought we might want to do. We actually had all the information that we generated that previous year. So you had a much better idea in which direction you wanted to go. And we've already done preliminary analysis of like, all the programs we have in place to see how they intersect. And I think the big question is going to be, do we actually build upon our existing programs? Or is there something better out there that would intersect with whatever this SEL framework's going to look like? So, and the fact that that was a goal that the committee wanted actually worked out remarkably well for us, given all the groundwork that had been laid.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I can start with Lindsay. Katie?
I think it's wonderful, I read it. The only question I have is, I know that we've talked about before maybe getting languages into elementary level. I know parents have been voicing, it just be, it seems like it'd be easier for the kids to learn it at an elementary level. And then, you know, it makes sixth grade not so shocking that you have like so many changes, and then you're learning a new language. So I didn't know if that was anything that could be managed. I know you already have the triennial plan.
It's in there. It's in the, if you look in the EL goal in year three, we'll be talking about it in a moment, but in year three of the EL goal, we have elementary world language.
Oh, so it will be put in there?
It's in there.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you for your walk-through and update. Do, is there other pieces that you want to go through in the rest of it?
I wanted to just quickly go through the...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought...
No, no, that's, yeah, yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah, I think he was going to outline.
I just wanted to talk about each one briefly, that's all. The special education one is actually relatively short, so it's always nice when you have a goal and it's something that you kind of have to do anyway. So one of the things that we have to do as a district, and every district in the Commonwealth has to do, is come up with a new IEP. So you may know for students, special needs students, they have to have an individualized education plan. The one that we currently use is probably eight to 10 years old. It does need some revision, more around being much more objective with goals and goals on those IEPs. And so the Department of Education is requiring all districts to come up, to work with them on a new IEP project. And so we'll be part of that project beginning this year. And so we'd like to put together an IEP project team to review the IEP project requirements, the data management system evaluation. They are going to give us a lot of information. This is highly coached by the Department of Education in terms of how we're going to put this together. But we do have some ways that we can tweak it and we can make it our own to some degree. So we do have an IEP project team we'd like to put together, and then very, very similar, put the team together next year. In the second year, we train everybody on how to use the new IEP, maybe have a couple of teams that may agree to be, you know, early adopters. And then in year three, we're full-on into the new IEP. So very similar kind of implementation to the SEL for the special education. And in the second year, like I mentioned before, they do intersect. So we start working with the IEPs as well as the social-emotional learning to make sure that those are aligning along the way as we work with the professional development with the staff. So for special education, the IEP is the bedrock of what we do with our students. And so when we talk about making any improvements or changes, to the extent that we can influence how IEPs are written and make sure that they're working to the best of our students, it's fantastic work to do, and we have three years to make that happen. So we're excited about that.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Ford?
Sure. Thank you. One of the nice things that's also going to come out of this, which is a peripheral piece, is as we're building out these SEL pieces, the first part of the plan, and we redo the whole IEP process and the IEPs we're using, we're going to go ahead and get both groups together to review how we have our 504 district plan set up, and as well as the district accommodation plan, our BBSD, our building-based support teams. So, I mean, we have all these things in place, but they're not necessarily aligned with each other. What we'll do in the second year of both the SEL plan and the IEP plan is get a group together, both groups, both those groups and myself, and we'll go through and we'll align all these different processes across the district. So then everything actually lines up and supports each other, as opposed to supporting students as like an independent piece of the puzzle. So that's, that should bear, you know, bring huge benefits to bear long-term in terms of implementing all these different procedures and practices.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the third element is for our English-language learners. And so we're looking toward the next three years. The last triennial plan, you might remember, brought the English-language learners into all the schools, and we have teachers in all the schools working with English-language learners. We are still getting students who are coming in, and as I mentioned earlier, we've gone from 409 students to 463 students just as of September 12th. First-year EL students require 90 minutes of instruction in ESL every day. And this year, on April, in April of 2023, our program is going to go through what's called a tiered focus monitoring. And so the state comes in, and they evaluate programs every several years for all districts, we're not special, but this happens to be our year. And so this perfectly aligns with that because the state will see the commitment that the Stoughton Schools has toward their EL students. And if you look in the first year, these are all enrollment, enrollment decisions that we are talking about. And this aligns perfectly with the additional Chapter 70 funding that we just talked about. So I've embedded the positions that we put in here into that Chapter 70 funding as well. So again, looking at the enrollment, it's a lot of enrollment in the elementary level. We did add a high school EL teacher last year, and so that helped us with the additional high school students. This year was perfect, it worked out. But now we're getting additional enrollments at the elementary level, and we may need to add a teacher at the elementary level. I'm not quite sure which school yet, it depends on kind of where things, where things shake out, but we want to have that position available to us. And then we also have to develop what are called ILPs, individual language plans, for EL students who are struggling. So not every one of them, but if they're not meeting their goals, we have to develop an ILP for them. And it's a lot of work, it's similar to an IEP in special education, and so the ELE director and the ESL teachers will be working on that. We do have Rosetta Stone, which helps anybody acquire a second language, and we're hoping to have students, families, and even faculty and staff who want to learn another language. We have licenses for everybody, it's a district-wide license. We're looking to expand the high school counseling, just with a .4 counseling position, with a bilingual counselor, and expand bilingual, not bilingual, but ESL para-positions to work in science and history and math, so that we can push in those services in classes that are not necessarily English. And we do have some of that going on right now at the high school, but we want to expand it further at high school and the middle school, so that those first-year students, imagine being a first-year student in a science class or in a social studies class, to be able to give them support in those classes as well. In the second year, again, all enrollment-driven and see how the program grows, but what we're thinking about in year two would be an assistant director, because right now we have one director and a series of teachers. And an assistant director would help with those individual learning plans that we have to do, would also be able to focus on a particular area, perhaps focus on elementary or focus on secondary, and assist, and assist the director. Again, we're looking at enrollment, where we know that many of the students in elementary right now are going to be going into the middle school over the next couple of years. So in year two, based on enrollment, we may or may not need to add an EL teaching position in FY '24. And then we talk about, Mrs. Pinion, what you were talking about, a supplemental curriculum, Rosetta Stone implementation, perhaps pilot next year, and use Rosetta Stone with the elementary students so they can begin to learn second language and see how it goes at a pilot level in year two, and then be able to do more of that in year three and kind of see how it goes. And then in year three, really, if we're going to be adding any more positions, they might be ESL coaches or co-teachers, because as we have higher-level EL students, so once they're in, they come out of the first year, they have to do 90 minutes, in the other years, it goes down to 40 minutes when they get higher. A coach working with a teacher in the class might be better than actually pulling those kids out. And so we're going to be working with both of those in year three. And then at the very end of this, the evaluation is based on what's called the Castaneda Three-Prong Test. And what that is, is a year-long program where we look at the educational theories, that's one of the prongs. We make sure that we have adequate and appropriate resources, that's the second prong. And then we actually look at the student results, we look at their scores and see how they're doing on all of the assessments that we give them. And assuming all of that's successful, we know that we have a strong and robust program after three years.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just think the most important points to make are the fact that the plans are response to the fact we're seeing an incredible increase in the number of students that require English-language education services, the level of services we have to provide for the incoming kids. We used to see just a spattering of level-one kids, now most of our kids are coming level-one, which is a full 90 minutes per day. So not only are we seeing additional 50 kids this year, most of them are getting the full gamut of services. And with respect to English-language education in general, we're seeing it become a lot more like special education. You know, special education IEPs, now we have ILPs for the ELE department. And even like monitoring kids, when kids come out of the program, we actually used to have to monitor them for two years, now we monitor for four years. It's just becoming much more time-intensive, and the services we provide, it's just much more intensive in terms of the number of people that we need to actually meet the requirements that are set forth by a department vet. And we'll get a very good idea where we're at with this TFM that's coming up this year, I believe it's in April, they're going to actually come out and do the site visit. And for the members of the committee have been around, it's the current version of the CPR Coordinated Program Review, it's been renamed, and it runs every three years instead of every six years now. But when we get the report from the state, which will probably be, you know, the end of summer or early September next year, it'll let us know, you know, if we're on the money in terms of staffing and services, because they'll do a full review of our program in conjunction with our ELE coordinator.
Thank you both, first and foremost, for partnering and leading this effort with the goals that we set forward for you guys to focus on and for the triennial plan. I really appreciate all the work that both of you have done, and also the members of the, the team members that were within those different planning and development teams. So thank you to everyone who put their time forward, and thank you for leading those efforts to both of you. I'm just going to go down to the end and start, and then see if there's any questions. Thank you.
No. Thank you for, I really appreciate, I totally missed that, Rosetta Stone thing.
It's long.
It was a long one, it was towards the end.
Let me say it's in there.
No, it was great, thank you.
Well, that just shows that, that team, that working group, thought of everything, you know? So that's great. Thank you for the presentation. And now we have to vote on that so we can make it effective and that you guys can work towards it, and then we will get updates from you on an annual basis on the progress of the triennial plans, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the triennial district improvement plans from July 2022 to June 2025.
Oh, you're all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next I have is some appointments I wanted to make so that we can get the school year started. Her face down there, she's freaking out. So the first I have is North River Collaborative. This was the position that Nita Hill had, where she attends, like, she attends a meeting, This was the position that Nita Hill had, where she attends, like, she attends a meeting, and it's something that I think is up your alley, Lindsay, and I'd like, I'm going to appoint you to that position. And we are looking forward to all the in-depth work that you do to understand that and bring it back to the committee. I think it's a great fit for you. Yeah, so I'll point, Lindsay Kreckler will be the North River Collaborative. For Pilgrim Area Collaborative, Dr. Rab, it's an annual appointment that the superintendent is appointed to annually, so there you go. Have fun on that one. Sick Bank, I have two. Katie and I think Fabian were Sick Bank previously, so I will appoint both of you again, if that's okay. For warrants, I can do that one. We've kind of figured out a groove to do that. And then use of facilities as well. I guess it's all online, so it's, you pretty much manage that. I don't, I just, whatever. For the SMAC board, a couple years ago, we, so the school committee has a biannual appointment to the SMAC board. Two years ago, during a very tough time, we put this out, and we asked for people to come forward who are interested. We had someone that spent a long reign and a lot of time, and we appreciate all the work that Alan Mills had done at that point in time. We had another candidate, a couple of the candidates that were interested, and we did an interview process. Gina Ko was who we had appointed at the time, and she is working out wonderfully. She has recently started picking up something that we asked about during the interview process, Katie, and it's with SMAC and getting interns. We have a lot of students that can get a lot of great experience through SMAC by doing that while they're in school and wanting to pursue that career in the future. So that being stated, I'd like to reappoint Gina Ko to that position. It does not make sense to even change it at this point, because they just started to work out that program, and she's continuing to do a great job, and she's always there and available if we have any questions, concerns for the board, and she brings those forward. So that I will be appointing Gina Ko formally in this meeting. For the Facilities Master Plan Subcommittee, biannually, we appoint folks, but we just completed it. I think this could hold off for a year, because we already have the Facilities Master Plan. I will add a school committee member to it, because I did have Katie, and I think that it would be a good idea that if, would you mind, Catherine, being on that? So that way, there is, if, in the event that there's just a slight quick meeting or something that needs to be discussed or anything for that matter, it's really important. It aligns with the South School project and any other projects that are happening. I tried to even out all of the appointments for everyone to have something big and kind of go from there. Cool? Thank you guys so much for your willingness to take these on, and looking forward to everything that everyone can do to help out the district. We have old business, which was Melmark New England. We had a presentation on that in June, and Dr. Rab, we had discussed getting a recommendation from you after some further research.
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. So I've done some research over the summer. On the recommendation of Chief McNamara, our Stoughton Police Chief, I did a Freedom of Information request for all the calls to Melmark in Andover and Lawrence over the past three years, just to get a sense of, you know, what the impact would be on our fire and police. And taken together, we reviewed these at a meeting in August with the chiefs, and the calls were routine, and the kinds that one would expect from a facility such as Melmark. Incidents were fire prevention inspections, spoke detectors, some EMS-related incidents and emergencies such like that. I spoke to Lieutenant Edward Guy, who's the executive officer of the Andover Police Department, and he said, quote, "They're great members of the community. They're never a problem." And in fact, they've done staff training with the Andover Police on how to work with students with autism, and so they consider Melmark a partner with the police department. Special education personnel that we've talked to are very impressed with Melmark's programming. The one thing that did mention to me is the program is popular, and so it can be difficult to get into. There's often a long waiting list, and there's no necessarily guarantee that just because you're a Stoughton resident, you're going to get into the program, but having it here in Stoughton does give us that opportunity. I spoke to Mrs. Sampson, our Director of Special Education, and she's very enthusiastic about having Melmark here in the community for those reasons, as well as, we worked with Melmark back when we were putting together the ALC program at the Hanson, and so she already has some relationships with the program and just doing some consulting that way. I spoke to Special Education Director in Andover, and again, programming is positive, top-notch, and the one thing she said to me is it's properly staffed. So if they have a student with needs, they'll put one-on-one staffing or even one-on-two staffing, two staff members with one student, and they won't accept a student if they cannot properly staff the needs of that student. And that made me feel a lot better after our presentation in June. In Lawrence, you know, there's an average of 10 calls per year, but all pretty routine. So at this time, based on everybody that I spoke to and Mrs. Sampson spoke to and the police chiefs, I do recommend that we accept Melmark into Stoughton.
That we approve them coming? Wonderful. So does anybody have any, we talked about it in length at that last meeting, but it was important, I think, for us to have an idea about that information, at least for myself. Does anybody have any other questions or anything for Dr. Rab? No?
I'll make a motion to approve Melmark, New England to come to Stoughton.
Ooh, it's close second on these two, on the end. They're trying, got to be louder. No, just kidding. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So can we let Kat, we'll have, yeah, she can email the director and let them know that we approved Melmark coming to Stoughton. The next is correspondence. I do not have any. Trying to think. No, I don't have any.
I received an email from a member of the public regarding the homework policy, so I responded to that, answered their questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the next is the acceptance of the minutes from the June 28, 2022 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 28, 2022.
Whoa, Lindsay, wow. Even Katie said it was quick.
That was, I didn't even finish saying it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Before we adjourn, there's one last question. Our next meeting would have fallen on the 27th, which would be the last day of Rosh Hashanah, so I would like to see if you guys are available on the 28th, which is the Wednesday, to meet instead of the Tuesday.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM. Yeah, we'll have a regular meeting on that day, and then we'd have exec session before if needed. Okay. And we would meet with the Student Advisory Council beforehand, so it will be a little earlier, so we have a little time with them. Okay? Great. So the next regular meeting would be September 28, 2022. Thank you, guys. So now, we're at the part of the meeting where we adjourn, Katie's favorite part.